Granville City Council would like to call a meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll.
Councilmember Gelderwels, Merricka.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwall. And Mayor Moss.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Jeff Lotzen from First Reformed Church in Granville. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation.
All right, let's pray. Almighty and tried in God, we give you thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You are loving and good and gracious. Father, we thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to exist in community with other people. Lord, we thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the schools, the churches, and all of the families and individuals that make our city the great place that it is. Father, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks for being with us. Yeah, I appreciate it very much. Well, tonight, councilmember Gelderwels and Vanderwall have both asked to be excused. So is there a motion to excuse them this evening? So, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great, I appreciate that, thank you. We have before us the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So, support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. We have our minutes from our last meeting, February 26. And is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So, support.
Motion and support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out on those? Marcy, as always, great job, thank you. Good and accurate and succinct. So we have motion and support. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the February 26 meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Okay. Presentation of the bills. Still a lot of money, Ken, but not as much as the last few. Just over $300,000 this time. Anything you'd like to point out before we open up for questions?
Just a couple of highlights tonight, Mr. Mayor. Let's go on there as related to the dump truck purchased by the city. That went on page 63, $89,000. And that, we see how it came in about eight, so with that particular vehicle. Motor four was for that reason. Noticeable higher expenditure per period, and it was about 31% of the total. General fund came in, about 20% of that, DEA 11, clean water plant 31, and water 10. Those are fairly typical splits. I did notice also on page four, the percussion play invoice for $30,000. That's related to the DEA musical garden project. If you need more detail on that, Teresa's here tonight. And then there also was a $24,000 bill for brick plumbing. That's the contractor that we've used to make the service line replacements to get rid of galvanized services for the water system. And they completed about seven in this period. So those are the highlights I selected, but if there's questions, we'll, as always, do our best to answer those.
Questions or can? About any of the bills? Okay. It is for motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $306,743.65.
So, support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merricka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Time for public comments. So anybody here tonight like to address the council, please just come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking tonight.
My name is Janelle Vanderwall. I'm from 3738 Masaki. And this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so I'm sorry. I just want to present a concern that I have. Recently, there was an auto accident on the corner of Canal and 36th, where a home was struck by a car. And this is a repeated thing that has happened. I think you'll hear more about that. But I'm very concerned about that crossing for a number of reasons. And I'd like to let you know about that. Maybe you're not aware of it. And consider it. First of all, there's a crosswalk there that's used very frequently by pedestrians. The lighting in that crosswalk is very poor. So if it's dark in the morning, it's very difficult. If you, I can relay that there is a biker that goes down that area every morning, not dressed in any type of reflective. It's difficult to see. You can't see this gentleman as he goes across that, let alone pedestrians. And even in the daytime, that's a very difficult intersection to cross. There's traffic that's coming from multiple directions. It's coming north to south. It's coming, turning right onto 36th Street. There's another one that's turning left on 36th Street. So if you're trying to cross that 36th Street intersection, going the same direction as Canal, it's very difficult. As a pedestrian, you have to be looking four different ways. If you have distracted drivers or ones that are in a hurry, they're not looking for you. Right? So the risk of getting injured at that intersection is very high. If you go down Canal, you'll see multiple signage for crosswalks. There's one at Jack Allen. There's one by the path that goes through to Wedgewood Park. There's one further down by 40th. There is no signage on 36th Street indicating that there's a pedestrian crosswalk there. The crosswalk lines are very poorly marked. I think that this is a concern. This is on a bus route. People have to cross over that intersection to get to the bus stop on the north side of 36th Street. Again, you have to cross it. I don't know how highly used that is, but it's there and it's available. And it's definitely something that we want to continue to have that resource available for our citizens, but it's not safe to get to it at this point. The last thing, well, two other things. First of all, traffic coming down Canal isn't always falling within the speed limits. It's very rapid. And I say this with all due respect to our officers here today. But it's fast. And especially in rush hour, people are diverting off from Rivertown to try and get down Canal, turning on 36th Street to trying to get into Genesee. Trying to cross at that time is a very difficult time. Kids are getting out of the high school, coming down Canal. Might not be quite as safe of drivers as others. Not judging there. So that's a concern. My biggest concern was something that I read last week, is that we're having Oakstown open next August. Right? We're going to be having a whole group of fifth and sixth grade children that will be getting out. There may be people, pedestrians, crossing. They're not going to walk down to Jack Allen and cross over there. They're going to be trying to cross the street. These are young children, impulsive children. I think it puts them at very high risk, and I'm concerned about it. Doesn't affect me personally, but I feel if I don't speak out, that there could be serious injury there. And I think it needs to be addressed, whether it's a light, three-way stop like we have at Canal and 52nd, whether it's a push button that we have on Wilson that alerts traffic to stop so that pedestrians can cross that street, let alone cross Canal if we have kids crossing it. I don't know what the solution is, but I think our, I think we've had a wake-up call with that car going through the intersection and hitting the home to know that this is not a safe intersection and that we need to look into it and address the problem. And I would feel bad that if I didn't say something and somebody was injured or worse, I wouldn't want that. So thank you for listening, and thank you for what you've done. You put up guard rail there. So I appreciate that, so.
Thank you for your comments, Janelle. I, Marcy, you're among friends who's.
Yeah, I know.
I noticed that city manager and Charlie, who's in charge of Department of Public Works, been taking notes the whole time, so I appreciate, appreciate your comments.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else here tonight like to address the council, just come on up? Janelle and I went to high, or to school together a few years ago.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and rest of council members. My name is Bob Zeitema. I'm at 3961 McIntyre Court, Granville. My wife and I have been a resident here since 1978, and we love this city. And, but we do have a very personal interest in 36th Street and Canal, that particular corner. Our daughter lives in the house that was struck, along with her two little boys. And the two cars, it seems, wanted to get into their bedroom. And the bedroom was smashed this last time, and it was very badly damaged the time before. This last time, the two boys were sick, and they were sleeping in the living room when the accident happened, about 10 o'clock. I'd like to express thanks to Jim Vanderwest, that I talked to a couple times, for his haste in putting up a guard rail and also that sign that indicates traffic goes left, right, not forward. With the guard rail, I'm not sure what the impact velocity would have to be in order to break through that. But I know the speed limit there is 40, which means people probably are going to be going 40, 45, 50. And if they don't see that stop sign and the guard rail, this accident is going to happen again. Two years ago, we had a drunk driver. I can't recall if she was also on some kind of drugs. But she plowed through and hit the boy's bedroom there, the front porch. And about two weeks ago, as Janelle was indicating, another vehicle went through. There's a couple ideas I'd like to just throw out there. I know the most probably one that would, people would come up with first is a traffic signal, where you have red and green lights changing color. But I came out of a driveway today, and there was a string of cars, about 10 or 15, coming down Canal. And I can't imagine how far that would back up with a red light. So I would like to suggest maybe a blinking light over that intersection, where it would blink red for traffic coming down 36th and yellow for cars on Canal. And I'm not a traffic engineer, but maybe somebody could do a study on that somehow. So I'd like to thank you all for listening. And, next speaker, I guess.
Great, thank you for your comments, Mr. Zeitema.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else here like to address the council? Now's your chance. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Barb Zeitema, I'm at McIntyre. And I'm the mom, the grandma of the family that lived in the house on Canal. First of all, I'm very grateful for what the city has already done for that intersection. I think it's going to be a huge improvement. But somebody suggested that maybe the sign of the warning on 36th, if there's a stop sign ahead, that maybe there could be a blinking light on there. And I thought that that would be a good idea, to have a warning before you approach the intersection. There's been all kinds of stuff on Granville neighbors about what happened. So many people were aware of it. And even today, there were a lot of comments on that site about what happened. And almost everybody says we need a light at that intersection because of the danger there. And because of there's so much traffic there. So my daughter, who couldn't be here tonight because of sick children, and she's one who lives in that home, she thinks that that whole intersection right there is just plain dark. There's not enough lighting in there. And without her stringing up all kinds of Christmas lights or whatever, it might be a good idea to have some kind of a city street light there. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Barb, appreciate the comments. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Kyla, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you again for being willing to fund 50% of the trees for the tree Granville sale. Right now, we're at almost 20 trees, so we're making some really healthy progress going forward. And I just want to kind of keep you updated in case we started hitting the limit. But right now, we're still pretty clear sailing. And I'd like to encourage everyone that is purchasing trees or is thinking about it. We're holding classes to teach you how to plant trees. And we are also holding other forester classes. We're doing a pruning workshop on Thursday night at 6:00 at the library, where we'll actually be taking a look at all the trees that were planted around the library addition. And so that we can do some young tree training so that we don't have future issues as they get larger. And we, I'm meeting with the people with the school for the Arbor Day celebration, where we're going to plant 18 trees at the Oakstown Intermediate School and finding out where the lines are and things like that, so we're not putting trees right on top of something. And the last thing that we're doing is we're having a silent auction with birdhouses. And I've gotten four or five of the birdhouses back already. People are doing amazing things with them. So we're kind of looking forward for those for Arbor Days at the Art and Chocolate Walk.
Quick question for you, because we've got a number of guests with us. So if any of our guests are Granville residents, which I know most of you are, how would they go about participating in the tree sale, where the city pays for half of the price of the tree, and resident pays for the other half, and then it gets planted on your own property?
Right.
How do they get to that online?
The best way for them to get there is to go to our website. And it's the Granvilltreeproject.org.
Granvilltreeproject.org, okay.
And if you scroll down a little bit, you can go shopping for a tree. You just have to make sure that your property is in, within the city limits of Granville.
I know these folks are because they're on McIntyre, and so that would be a great spot, so.
Yeah, and if they need help with selection of trees, we do that with the planting classes also. Or they can message us or send a information letter.
And the deadline for signing up or purchasing?
It depends on if the match is met from the city. And if it's met, we might come and beg for more. But what, we basically are running the sale from March 1st to March 31st.
So this is.
Last year, we sold 62 trees, so we're well on our way.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Do the tree, if we purchase the tree, it would have to be planted on our own property?
Yes. Right, Kyla, this is for private property, right?
This is for your, for your personal property.
To increase the tree canopy in Granville, because with the current developments, a lot of trees have come down, so this is a way to boost it back up again. Anybody else like to address the council? Last chance.
So a tree would not be able to be planted between a sidewalk and a road?
In many places, that's true, because there's gas and electric lines. So kind of the opposite. Yeah, and as the city forester, and how do you feel about that?
Well, did you say around Masaki?
McIntyre.
You were McIntyre, okay. Some streets in the city have underground electrical and others have aerial. And either one of them are a potential problem for trees. And so when it comes to right-of-way trees, the city likes to be in charge of where those go, so they don't interfere with our utilities. On your own private property, it's much less of an issue, which is part of the reason we can only put so many in the right-of-way, but we can put so many more on private property.
Thanks for the questions. Anybody else like to address the council? Last call, last chance. Anybody? Okay. Next item is a public hearing, and this is for the commercial rehabilitation district at 3668 Rivertown Parkway, which is the former Yonkers store. Right? Yeah. So come on up, and I know that we've met, but just introduce yourself.
Excuse me, I'm John Bryant from Underground Building Maintenance, 6568 Center Industrial Drive in Genesee. And I'm here to give a presentation asking for a commercial rehabilitation district to be drawn around basically the Yonkers property. I have some.
Sure.
Show and tell, but I don't know exactly if the camera zooms in on it, or should I point towards you guys or guys and guys?
I think initially, I might want to focus towards the council and the background.
Generally, the request is made for areas of various government units that need help, right? Ultimately, oversimplifying it, I look for, it's basically a tax freeze for the previous. You take last year's taxes and say, hey, we want to freeze these for the next 10 years. One to 10 years, I'm asking for 10. And it allows us to invest money without that additional value being taxed that's held off for 10 years. And then it'd be more of a, I don't know what you'd call it, like a cliff or a hill, whatever, where we'd all go up. This is a map I presented, Joshua was there, to the Business Relations Committee, explaining why we want to do this. And this just kind of shows Granville and the area around Rivertown Crossing Mall, which I think today was sold. I think it went from Brookfield's hands to the Pope Group out of Tennessee. So hopefully that'll bring good news. I think it was today. We think it's today, I was hoping it would happen in April. But it's been a work in progress, because when interest rates, when our Brookfield properties got into a lot of trouble, you can probably tell they basically stopped all maintenance on the mall not too long ago, unless it was maybe life and safety, whatever you call it. So if you just look at a map, I look around the Rivertown Crossing Mall, and obviously, the good, seems to be a lot, a lot of the good going around. You know, you've got your middle school here. You know, the area directly to the west, the high school across the street, everything from, you know, the dealership to the planning fitness, to everything over here. Everything seems to be doing rather well. New apartments, the pre-existing Redstone properties, there are even 90 more units there. Everything seems to be doing pretty well, even Bucktown, except for the mall. I think everyone's kind of aware of that. And previously, in the other meeting, I brought my commercial real estate representative. But at Rivertown Mall, as of two months ago, when we looked at it, there was 10 vacancies in the mall upstairs. There was 15 downstairs, which represents about 18% of vacancy rate. When you look at the square footage of the mall, 12% is in the Yonkers, which I own. 10% of the Sears, which is, when you add all those together, that's basically a 40% empty space in the mall. And when you look around the rest of this portion of Granville, I can't really speak to your central business district or whatever, but there are very, of the vacancies there, there's very few. There might be a few in Bucktown, but those will be filled up. Everything seems to be doing pretty well. So we're just looking at trying to revitalize the portion that I own. The global degree activities in more than retailers. We kind of have to do what we have to do, but we're working on activities that would draw more people to come to the mall ultimately. Because Amazon, everything else, obviously, less people are shopping at the mall. And I think there was news out today that businesses are probably even closed also. They're only going to have one in Gran, one in Granville, exactly where we are. These are just some pictures of the lack of maintenance on the mall. Again, some of you may drive around it, some of you may not. Obviously, the Sears has been sitting empty, and there's been a lot of struggle to have somebody or to have actually Sears sell that. There's been a lot of offers to buy this, even from some, like CMD was even, made a very strong offer. And they were basically turned down for a higher number. Hopefully, raising payments going at the old auto center, perhaps. Inside the mall, you can see lack of maintenance. Again, this has to do, I believe, with the raising of interest rates, because Brookfield Properties was only paying interest only on their $80 million-ish loan. So hopefully, they're going to bring in some public money to work on the mall. You've probably all seen this in go to the mall. Basic repairs not being done. I don't think the carousel's been fixed in at least six months. Our property, property of my company, well, we're not there yet. Obviously, the parking ramp has problems, which I can't really speak to, because it seems to be secretive, but, you know, there's holes in the asphalt all over the place. Just maintenance that's not being done. This is just normal maintenance that anybody owns commercial properties would do, but it's just not happening. All these pictures are basically to show that this is probably an area that needs to be revitalized. This is some of the work that we've preemptively done. Obviously, we've deflagged the building, parking lots, even though they're supposed to fix them. And we have a, you know, a monthly maintenance fee, they do it, none of it's happening. So we've gone through, repaired the parking lots. There was no water for the vegetation either, actually, if they never fixed it. I think they might have fixed it in the end of last summer. So we stripped out all the vegetation around the building and put limestone around it and decorated it with boulders, which, previous comments, we're going to stop cars from going into somebody's house. You might want to put boulders in your yard, it'd be pretty effective. So we've, we're trying to white box the property as we speak right now. And that's kind of the new look of the building. That we changed at least on the outside. Restrike it, fix as much of the outside as we can. And that's really about it. Probably be more productive if you ask me questions related to this, but I mean, that's the gist of it. Just some help, some support for the work to be done on the building. And we're working on tenants, obviously, to try to fill those spaces. The challenges would be, it's a two-story building, so we have to divide the HVAC, you know, the prime square footage, it seems, like for a larger building is around 30,000 square feet, because most of the big boys, you know, who would take a big amount of square feet in a space, they're either in place or they don't exist anymore. So the sweet spot seems to be around that, you know, 20,000 to 35,000 square feet. So probably the bottom floor will divide in two. The upper floor, we really can't divide, because there's only one entrance, so it's difficult, other than they have one tenant take the whole upper, upper portion of it. But it has taller ceilings, so hopefully that'll be like a trampoline park or something along those lines. I think that's about it, other than if you have questions.
Any questions? May have questions for Charlie in a second. We'll do that after the call.
Sure.
John, I think you talked about this with the Business Relations Committee a little bit, but can you talk a little bit about your previous experience doing rehabilitation on commercial properties?
Sure, I bought the Yonkers at the Lakes Mall. That one was different, it's a single-floor building. We divided it in three. The first tenant we have is Family Farm and Home. They're occupying it now. They're going to open their store next week, I believe. So they're going to have their grand opening. The other two spots, we're still finishing the bathrooms and everything in them, so we're hoping to get those leased out. One of them probably will go to some form of activity. And then the center one, which is a little bigger spot, we're waiting to see what's possible there. But ultimately, you got to refurbish buildings and bring them down to a size that's usable. These big anchor tenants, just, you know, they're, they're all going out of, not all going out of business, but you have to rehab the buildings and divide them up realistically. They present different challenges, but the other one's easier, because it's a single floor. And I've done, let's see, the north, I'm sorry, is it North Kent Mall? Yeah, North Kent Mall, I bought the old Kmart there years ago. Put 50 windows in the buildings, had no windows, redeveloped the outside, that's a self-storage facility. I think that's what happens when a mall goes too far down the road, because that one was 50 years old. It was already not, you know, it was already divided up with Lowe's next door, so it was just an island of the building all on its own. So that's actually a pretty successful one, even though not everyone wants self-storage. That one worked out pretty well. I did a 470 Market Downtown, that was a 100-year-old brick building that had structural issues with the building leaning over. So we straightened the building, repaired all the brick, roof, and now it has, I think, 162 apartments in it. So that's generally what I do, I try to find older, big buildings and refurbish them and occupy them. So this would just be the latest project I'm working on.
Great. Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, so the outside of your building looks great.
Thank you.
Best-looking piece of the mall. Do you wait to do the inside until you get tenants, or are you doing stuff on the inside right now?
So, the inside, we stripped all the floors, all the tile, carpeting, wood, ground the floors, put a generic coating on it. We raised the ceiling, all the drop ceilings, which aren't really usable anymore, we ripped those out, and then we used the, as much as we could, the Consumers Energy Credit for the lighting. So it's, you know, all LED lighting now, that type of stuff. But it's really when we get into the tenant portion of it, where it gets expensive, dividing the HVAC, reworking the electrical, you know, dividing the space. So, I didn't really wait for that portion of it, because you can't, it's hard to have somebody come in and envision what the building will be unless it kind of is sort of white-boxed, where they can see what can go in there. So, you know, when you go into the Sears, which you can imagine what it is, what it looks like now, it's very hard for somebody to go in and say, hey, I'm going to wait a year for this to get white-boxed, and then if it looks right, we're going to go through the next portion of the project. We just bring it to that point first. And I've done this with a number of buildings. Usually about 30% of the money is wasted because it's work that you probably get undo anyway. But it gives that visual of what it should be. I think Steve was there before any work was done, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, I think when I was there, and I think Ken was there as well, it was all cleared out.
Okay.
I think it was, it looked a lot like on the body right up there.
Okay.
Quite a bit of hard work at that.
Okay. It's a little different now, but...
Okay. Great. Thanks for the presentation. So this is a public hearing, is there anybody here tonight that would like to address this? Carolyn, welcome.
As you, as you folks know, I am on the Planning Commission. I am not speaking as the Planning Commission person, but, uh, just a reminder, gentle to you folks as well as everyone who's watching this. When we worked on the updated master plan and we redid ordinances a few years ago, one of the major concerns the Planning Commission dealt with was the state of the mall. And if you recall, part of our discussion was that we were very concerned that at that point, it really wasn't a healthy mall, but we had indications that it might, you know, improve. I think the number-one goal of the Planning Commission at that time was and continues to be, a healthy mall environment is best for the city. So I have no particular one way or the other on this, but I think, just to remind you that that is what the Planning Commission really was concerned about.
Appreciate the comments. Anybody else here like to address the issue? Matt, Charlie, I've got a quest, uh, let's see, is there motion to close the public here?
Support.
Support in the discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Charlie, um, this kind of reminds me of the industrial facilities, tax abatement, where you establish a district, and then separately you do the abatement?
That's correct. Yep, it's a two-part process. First, tonight, I think you're discreting the district. Once that's approved at the next hearing, then you can grant a certificate, if the council chooses to.
Okay, so...
Anyway, it is, the procedure is very similar to an IFT. There are some differences on how the tax abatement works. An IFT cuts the mileage rates in half, except for the state education tax.
Okay.
Okay, this would freeze the taxable value for up to 10 years, however long the council decides, if they decide to grant the tax exemption. So if you freeze taxable value, that's only frozen on the building. So the land can still change value, and the personal, business, personal property for any businesses that they go in there, the city would be able to collect tax revenue from them also.
Counsel, any questions for John or Charlie, anyone else? Okay. You have before you a resolution, Resolution Number 3339, and that's a resolution to establish a Commercial Rehabilitation District for Underground Building Maintenance LLC. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So, support.
Motion, support. Any discussions, comments, just me?
Yeah, so I will preface my comments by saying, like the Planning Commission Chair referenced, I too would like to see rehabilitation of the mall. I think this is a great project, and I look forward to its success. With that being said, and it's going to be successful, because I'm the minority on these things, and that's okay, but I am going to just explain my thought process, and that is that I will be voting no for it. And the reason I'm voting no is because, um, similar to my opposition to an industrial facilities exemption, when we do this, we are providing relief to someone, because that is viewed as a valued project. But when that occurs, we are then shifting the tax burden off of that person and onto all other taxpayers, so residents and business owners. And so I don't think that government should philosophically, I don't think government should get in the business of determining which projects are worthy of support and which are not. Our role is to create a level playing field, provide a solid infrastructure. I will continue to vote to keep taxes as low as possible and keep intrusive regulations at bay. But the role of government, I don't feel, is to say, well, this project is really worthy of 10 years of freezing taxes, because we're not going to freeze our expenses for the roads that people use to get there. We're not going to freeze the expenses for providing police protection that will respond to incidents there. So, I personally think that the role that we should play is to keep the level, the playing field level, and work to keep taxes low and regulations not burdened some, but when we have industrial facilities exemptions or commercial rehabilitation districts, what we are doing is then interjecting and saying, well, at the expense of all other projects, this one is the most valuable. So I will be voting no, but I do appreciate your work, and I will be rooting for the success, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? See, we have motion support already, Marcy? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norfolk?
No.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is under Council Communications and Or petitions, and this is regarding the Wedgwood Park Pickleball Courts and naming, and I see that we have a lot of the Park and Recreation Board with us, so, but Ken, do you want to introduce that?
I'll introduce it, and I think Kim is the chair, is probably the person to ask questions if there are any, but including the council's package tonight were the minutes from the January 24 meeting of the Park and Rec Board. And as part of their agenda on that night, they considered, um, a naming, an honor, I guess, considered honoring our former mayor and his wife, Jim and Kitty Buck, by naming the pickleball court facility at Wedgwood Park, which has recently been expanded, by naming it after Jim and Kitty. So, um, it, I think probably everyone here remembers the Bucks' fondness for racket sports and their involvement in senior Olympics and things of that nature, so, I don't know, Ken, if there's anything more, you mentioned that the plaque was going to be provided by the Park and Rec Board if the name is approved by the council?
Correct. If it's approved, the Park and Rec Board will purchase the plaque. We've asked Charlie to start looking for Jim Buck Rock, and we can put the plaque on because Jim likes his rocks. And we just think because of his ambassadorship, not just the mayor of Granville, but what he did for the outline committees and how involved he was, that would just be a nice honor to present in memory of for the memorial pickleball courts, Jim and Kitty Buck. Very simple, just put it there and go with it. I think it's just, would be beneficial to know why pickleball has taken off of Granville, that Jim put the first two courts in. That's some?
Josh, anything you'd like to add as the council?
Yeah, Tim's here too, so good to see you, Tim. Jim and Kitty's son is also on the Park and Rec Board, but there were some memorial funds that were granted to the Park and Rec Board after Jim passed, and the direction was to use it for some kind of park improvement. And so, Tim's a part of the discussion, and the family's talked about it, and he's been supportive. I don't know if we landed on the exact name, but we wanted it to be named after Jim and Kitty both, as some kind of memorial. As Ken mentioned, Jim was instrumental in getting the first couple of pickleball courts in, and was very persistent in making sure that those got put in a number of years ago. It took a while to get everything put together to do that, so, you know, obviously, those that know the Bucks know that tennis and racket sports is a passion of theirs, you know, Tim's the varsity test coach at the high school, and also was just recently inducted into the Granville Athletics Hall of Fame, so congratulations, Tim, on that honor. But we thought it would be appropriate to do that, and, you know, just wanted to let the city know that that was kind of the recommendation that we'd like to make. Those courts should open this spring, once the final touches are put out, and it looks great. Could be a nice tribute to the Bucks. Give people an opportunity to kind of remember. You know, Jim was very passionate about parks as well, you know, was the chair of the Park and Rec Board for many, many years, and, you know, Ken mentioned the rock, every park's got a rock that, you know, Jim was part of putting in, and wanted to make sure there was always a plaque there, right, when any park was being dedicated, so, thought that'd be a very appropriate honor to have.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Should be a tennis court. He loved tennis, yeah. He was the lifelong tennis player. He was, competed in the senior Olympics, you know, at, you know, at a high level at tennis, but of course I support it. I'm not implying I would not support it, I see it as supporting the Buck family, I'm just saying I wish it was a tennis court.
They originally were.
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
That's right. All right. Take that.
So, is that a motion to approve?
So moved, yes.
Support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
Norfolk?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Now, on to ordinances and resolutions. A couple zoning ordinances that we've already taken a look at. So is there a motion to remove from the table ordinance, proposed ordinance 23-004? That's regarding childcare centers. Motion to take that from the table?
So...
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. So the requested action then is to adopt ordinance number 23-004 regarding childcare centers. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
I move to adopt.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Carolyn, Planning Commission, thank you for your ordinance. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce?
Yes.
Maryga?
Yes.
Norfolk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Next, is there a motion to remove from the table proposed zoning ordinance 23-005, and that's regarding landscape plants?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support. Discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Now, is there a motion to adopt zoning ordinance number 23-005 regarding landscape plants?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? See, when there's only five councilmembers, y'all are pretty busy here, when I'm not doing any of it, so, that's good, thank you all. I'm voting support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Maryga?
Yes.
Norfolk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Let's see, and we had skipped on to that other resolution, so we adopted that one. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. We have the February reports for the Police Department. Thank you again, chief, always very, very interesting, like the visuals, always, always really interesting. And the Treasurers Report as well from February, and the Business Relations Committee Report from January, along with our Park and Recreation Board for that month. Also, the Historical Commission minutes from February meeting. There's also a resolution to accept as public streets Alder Drive and Ren Spike Drive, maybe Ken, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, council actually passed a motion last September to do this. I had inquired about that when we came back into the city, knowing that Alderwood Development was being completed. But since that time, we've gone through the process of submitting our changes to the state for the Act 51 map, and we have two public streets in that development there, those two streets that were already mentioned. And the state requires a resolution to indicate the city's adoption of those streets as public streets, and therefore add them to our Act 51 map, which results in additional funding to the city based on the longer mileage of local streets. It's not a huge number, but we certainly want to take advantage of it. So, this is nothing different than the council's already approved, it's just doing it in a different form, okay?
And so that would be Resolution 3340. And finally, under the consent agenda is proposed proclamation for National Arbor Day, which is, as Kyle had mentioned, is April 26th, and adopting the resolution proclamation is a requirement to be a tree city USA. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions about any of the individual items? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Ken, City Manager's Report.
Just a single miscellaneous purchase. VP Deputy Director's son, glad submitted a memo to council regarding decorative streetlight pole on Jacoba Drive, that's supposed to be the meaning for accidents, because it's the second time this council's entered, but in this case, the driver did not strike a house, but did strike a decorative light pole. And those are the very large ornate...
Valuable.
Valuable poles. And so, we find the lead time for these is quite extensive, and obviously, it's kind of having like a tooth-missing smile there, so we'd like to proceed to replace that. It is our expectation that there'll be a reimbursement through the auto insurance carrier on this one, but with council's authorization tonight, we would proceed to make that purchase order, issue that purchase order, and we'll see what it brings as far as time in the city, but it's going to be a while down the pike here, so. It is on the manager's report and on the consent agenda because it's unbudgeted, but we're not anticipating it's having a budgetary impact.
Questions for Ken?
Just above that light pole, I'm surprised it's expensive, I'm sorry. Would there be any reason to purchase a spare one, so we have a backup one next time something that happens? Too expensive, just something like that, city inventory?
I think we did some backup purchasing when the streetscape went in of some things, but just not these.
You could purchase another one, an extra light, and sit there for 20 years, and probably use the resources. By that time, there'll be change in the style of lights and all the light pole.
A good question, because maybe shipping with...
Right, and there's such a long lead time, very expensive, but if you don't want to have something that expensive, just sitting around, not being used either.
Any other comments or questions? Now, is there a motion to approve the purchase order request for $11,600 for light pole and installation, and vendor is Michigan Lighting Systems West and Strain Electric for installation.
Smooth.
Yes, this would be in the best interest of the city. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Ken, anything else?
No, not, I guess I was pointing in your packet the miscellaneous materials that you usually include, there's some information from the Michigan Municipal League about short-term rentals and another version of regulation that's been submitted now at the state level. We've seen these for the past few years. I guess the notable piece to this one is that previous attempts to have legislation on short-term rentals lean towards prohibitions of local units of government from regulating them at all. And this particular version does not include that prohibition. It seems to include the greater flexibility for a governing body to make your own rules appropriate to your own community. We've talked about this before. While I'm sure there's short-term rentals happening in Granville, it's not to the same level as say, like Michigan waterfront community or an upper west resort community. So we haven't seen a lot of issues related to these, a couple things off and on, but it's not reached the point here where it has in some community where a significant percentage of the housing is being used not for permanent residents but for short-term rentals. So I just included that for your information. It's not an act yet, it's simply proposed, but I think this one's probably got a greater chance of at least being an MTA support. And we'll keep posted on that as they go through the process, but just flagged that for your attention. And other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
Okay, good. There will be a request to go into a closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining. But before that, you want to back that up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to also address the public comment regarding 36th and Canal. And we were taking notes and we'll take a look at a lot of that. Things like cross block markings, those get refreshed on a regular basis. It doesn't happen in March, but it typically happens in May. We'll look at the lighting at that corner to see if it's sufficient. The ones that are more readily achievable, we'll promptly look at those. The more difficult ones are the ones that relate to like a traffic signal where there are state requirements that you must meet in order to install a signal. That's tougher and it will take a deeper level of analysis on that. So I don't want to get hopes up. It may be that our traffic configuration there and the volumes, it is fairly confusing, but it relates to the eight busiest hours of a day kind of a thing and you have to meet a certain floor of activity from all approaches for each of those hours. So that just gives you an indication there's much more to a signal. But we will not hesitate to look at the rest of it and we'll still look at whether we think this meets the warrants for something more than that.
I do have a question. How do we follow up on that? Because I, you know, I just feel really passionate about the fact that, you know, there are some young people that potentially could be harmed, you know, if we're a community, how do we follow up? I know you're working, but, and not that I'm going to be checking up on you, but I do feel like we have that responsibility.
Yeah. And I'm going to qualify my answer. I think the way you follow up on that is you stay in touch with me and that means you stay in touch with the city manager. I don't anticipate being here in this interim role for many more months, so, and I can't tell you who the next city manager will be. But if you contact, either visit city hall, come into the manager's office, if you just call city hall and ask for the city manager, ask for Ken, I'd be happy to speak with you. Sorry.
No, no, thank you. Josh, let's start tonight with council member comments.
Yeah, we don't really have too many comments today other than I saw that we had the program for the police department awards ceremony from Crystal Hill. Just wanted to say congratulations to those that were honored and that read through this and hear about all the different things that are going on in the course of the year that our officers have been involved in and the heroics and the great service that they've been providing for our communities. So just congratulations to all. It just, you know, reminds us of what a great job they do and, you know, how much respect and appreciation we have for the work that they do. So thank you and congratulations.
And other than echoing that, I don't have any time for that.
Yeah, I want to thank Mayor Wells and the citizens for coming tonight too, and please do stay in touch with the city on that. And I was real glad you pointed out what our DPW did in the short term to hopefully help that situation until it gets better. And then, Ken, I was just wondering if maybe we could look ahead to April and, you know, in light of Curtis Holt's email about applications coming in through the end of the month, if we could look at whatever dates we might need to set in April or how we're going to approach that.
Yeah, as I recall, I think it came in while I was on vacation, so the email indicated was that he was looking to set something up with the council after the closing of the posting to review those. Okay. Thoughts on that? Are you thinking in terms of a, go ahead.
Just, I'd like to get dates on the calendar. It's going to be a busy time.
Yeah, I think the first week is spring break or whoever. I'll start breaking.
In April, from the council perspective, we'll have the usual second work Monday. We also have the second budget work session scheduled for the third Monday. And so that only leaves one other Monday in the month, and that's not till the end. I wonder then about either piggybacking onto the budget work session, which is typically shorter, the second one than the first one, or if that's too late in the month, just working with the city council to come up with another off night that might work for everybody. I think the sooner we do it, the better.
Or day, remember we did on a Saturday.
That's possible.
I mean, nobody wants to, we all love our Saturdays and weekends, however, it was a pretty efficient way to do it, I think.
Yeah, and I think as long as we get it on the calendar.
Yeah, you're right. This thing's, gets busy.
Yeah. I'm happy to, if we can come up with a couple of dates tonight to share those with Curtis and make sure he's available. It's probably easier for him to meet, to look at a list that we might have of two or three dates and say which ones work than just to get one and find out it doesn't, so.
I guess I'm just wondering, do we have a good sense of what, I mean, I guess I could look in the proposal, but what the timeline is if the job posting closes the end of the month? There's, I would imagine a period of consultant vetting of candidates and background checks and things like that that goes on. I don't remember how long that takes. Would the next step that after that be setting up interviews with the council or would there be a step in between there where we're, you know, considering or discussing candidates that he's vetted as far as which ones he want to interview? It seems like there was an extra step in there.
Yeah.
Are you talking about like actually setting up a date to go through the interviews like what was done last time?
Just thinking in terms of the big picture, you know, what are the steps? What do we need to set aside? I know this time we want to make sure that the department heads have some time to meet some of the finalists, whether we've already narrowed it down or whether that happens because we only have a handful of people who've applied, I don't know.
I think last time didn't our consultant come and bring us a kind of a list and we could see kind of on paper what we gave it's worth and we kind of whittled it out for what we wanted to interview.
Was that at a meeting that first time?
Yeah.
I think we did.
I forget when we did it, if it was on a Saturday or evening, but.
I think that was a regular meeting that we did that.
Saturday we did the interview.
Saturday we did.
But I'd like to make sure we get that step in between whittling it down and having some type of meeting group with the city employees.
And Ken, sorry.
Yeah, this time around.
And Ken has been so gracious for this time. I think he's here longer than he thought, so I'm glad you're here. Thank you, thank you. But yeah, let's get some stuff, maybe a couple things. And Curtis, he'll know what dates we need.
Well, I think, you know, the comment about one of these steps happening as part of a regular meeting, I think that tells me that one of our possible dates would be the second Monday in April. That's the regularly scheduled council meeting. I also think that falls next spring break, so.
I think it's right after spring break.
Right after, okay, good, because that's a potential conflict.
But is he going to be ready to present us with candidates by that time?
Well, that's why I'd like to give him a few dates and let him tell us how it fits into his schedule, so. I think this is different here. You have the date for the April?
I think it's the eighth.
Eighth?
Okay.
So I'm going to indicate April 8 as one of those days, if he's ready. And then are there a couple other dates that you want to toss out that we can see if they work, at least the council members were here tonight?
I like your idea of the 15th and the next week at the budget planning session for that first meeting.
Right, okay. You want to give just those two or are you interested in a third option?
I think those two, if we could give them those two dates for that first meeting, then we can make some plans.
All right, I'll get in touch with him.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
That's it, Steve. Paul?
Yeah, no, I just want to echo what's already been said in terms of thanking our residents here for bringing this intersection of Canal 36th Street to our attention and look forward to, you know, hearing their analysis by our engineer and what can be done, what appropriate measures we can take. Thanks.
Great, yeah, thank you all for being here. Encourage you to buy a tree. Increased it, a tree canopy. Also, counsel, you have some homework. This is the proposed budget for the next year, which Jane just handed out, so.
And on that score, because the work session actually starts at 6:00, we usually make that a dinner meeting, and so I asked Jane to drop a menu on you guys that if you're interested, not everybody participates, but if you're interested in food with that meeting, you can make a selection.
And that's going to be here?
It'll be here at city hall.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Like I indicated, there's a request to adjourn to a closed session for the purpose of collective bargaining discussion regarding the police department rank and file unit. Is there a motion to go into that closed session?
So, support.
Motion and support. Marcy, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Merinda?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
And Mayor Musk?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We appreciate it.